Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Milton. Mr. President.
Well, first I'll apologize for running a little late today. Oh, please, never mind. I heard that Seth and I were in a meeting with the mayor. There's something good things going on in Omaha. We got so much to talk about. We just kind of ran over a little bit. So I'll keep it short. You know, some of the things we were talking about were the wonderful parks that we have in Omaha. I would encourage everyone, go check out the Luminaria. Lewis and Clark, in addition to the riverfront. We just have so much going on and so many great things to offer. In addition to that, we've got some wonderful golf courses around town. But it looks like the next two weeks, the weather's gonna be beautiful. So I hope everybody can get out and enjoy some of the wonderful parks and recreation that we have here in Omaha. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the open meeting act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate having you here today. Look forward to hearing your testimony on our many items. I'd encourage you to turn your cell phones off, or at least to vibrate.
Item six, resolution to approve the City of Omaha 2024 property tax requests.
The public hearings on our agenda, on our budget, budget items have already been held, so the vote on number six is today. I don't see any lights. Is there a motion? There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Milton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item seven, to consider a Class ZZ liquor license for Golden Chief Whiskey Company located at 3309 Oakview Drive, Suites 104 and 105.
Public hearing and vote on number seven is today. Proponents, please. Okay, proponent? Yeah, come on down. You're on number seven?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, just your name and address there at the podium?
Name is David Young. Address three zero, or I'm sorry, the commercial address.
Yeah, that's fine.
Three, three, zero, nine. I apologize, I'm drawing a blank. Oakview Drive, yes. Suites 104 and 105.
Okay, here to, just here to answer questions about the application, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Any other proponents on number seven? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing's closed. Mr. Harding.
I like your ride, and I'll move to approve.
Motion a second. Ms. Johnson.
Yes, Mr. Young, how are you today?
Good, ma'am, how are you?
Good. Looks like today might be your first time coming to the city council?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so I'm, I'm gonna put you in the hot seat just for a little bit, just to have some fun here. Tell me a little bit about your operation.
Sure, so we are a blended bourbon whiskey company. So our operation at Oakview will be to blend whiskeys. We, we source aged barrels from around the country, bring them in, blend them together. I'm the blender. And then we package them and put them out to market. So we'll have a small tasting room, which will be open to the public from time to time, and we'll also offer small retail bottles and merchandise.
Wow, sounds, sounds interesting. Is there, who would be your direct competition?
We're in a higher price range category as far as the spirits market. So we don't have any direct competition. Matter of fact, we're, we collaborate with any and all of the, the local spirit companies.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Milton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thanks.
Thank you, counsel.
Good luck.
Item eight, to consider a Class C K liquor license for Dolomiti Pizzeria in Inauteca, located at 1105 North 13th Street. Is communication from the planning department regarding permits.
Public hearing and vote on number eight is today. We have the applicant by Zoom. Mr. Mendez, we'll get you off mute here in a second. All right, good to see ya.
Good to see you. Good afternoon, city council members. Good to see you again.
Thank you. And then just repeat your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Carlos Mendez, 4607 North 176th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68116.
Great, thank you. Are there any other proponents today on number eight?
Yes, my name is Tim Maids, 2624 North 66th Avenue.
Thank you. Any opponents to number eight today? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Carlos, hi, how are ya?
Very good, good to see you again.
You too. Can you tell me a little bit about my experience if I were to come into your restaurant?
Yes, of course.
If I may field the question, please. We're opening a wood fire sourdough artisanal pizza that's kind of rooted in the northern Italian regions of Italy. We're very excited to be opening in the Millware Commons area of the north downtown neighborhood. We're gonna be serving lots of, you know, pizza, charcuterie boards, and featuring some wines from around the regions there. And we're very excited to be in that neighborhood.
All right, and as a customer, about average, how much would I anticipate to spend in terms of getting maybe a slice of pizza or a whole pizza?
Well, the best part of the operation is that we will be offering takeout and delivery as well. So you don't only have to just go get a pizza, but it really depends up to the customer, which we enjoy. You could totally come in and just have a piece of pizza and a glass of wine, you know, for around the $20 margin, or you could come in and have a full evening experience for more than that. We like to just keep it accessible to almost everyone in the neighborhood.
Cool. And your location, is there anything significant about your location in terms of you picking that and what inspired you to pick that location?
Yeah, you know, the, the neighborhood there, just north of the stadium is getting a lot of traction with a lot of new businesses, all local moving in. We really like the building itself. It's, what, over 100 years old, historical, 160, 160 years old. The character of the space really aligned with the concept that we were pursuing. And we think it's a, there's, while there are businesses that are mostly daytime operation, we'll be one of the first offering, you know, dinner and, and drinks in the evening as well. So we're hoping to kind of be an anchor for that neighborhood.
And so how late will you be open?
It seems like most, well, the one other business that does have nighttime service is open till about 9:00 PM. There's another one maybe open till 10:00 on the weekends, so no later than 10:00 PM.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I move to approve subject upon permits. Are you, are you aware of the permits that, that we will need in order to complete this?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second to approve contingent upon permits. And I would also just say I'd, I'd vouch for Carlos's work in Benson. He's been a great operator there. And he had a really great article just a few weeks ago about all your concepts too, that includes this new one too, so we look forward to seeing it.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it, Mr. President.
Roll call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Milton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item nine, to consider a Class C E liquor license for Roxy located at 1100 Capitol Avenue, Suite 105.
Public hearing and vote on number nine is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, my name is Tony DiSalvo at 6027 University Avenue in Cedar Falls, Iowa, 50613.
And I'm Bailey Rose Cranz. I'm an attorney at Panzing Hogan Ernst &amp; Boucher. Address is 10250 Regency Circle, Suite 300 in Omaha. We've submitted the application and here to answer any questions. Otherwise, we just ask for your approval. And we'll be here on the next one as well, just so you don't get surprised when we stand up again.
Look forward to seeing you. Any other proponents today on number nine? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing's closed. Ms. Johnson.
Mr. President. Hi, how are you?
Hi, I'm wonderful, how are you?
Great. Can you tell me a little bit about what I might expect when I arrive at your operation?
So Roxy. Roxy is an 80s, 90s, 2000s restaurant bar. So you gotta go in, it's retro, there's a, a bar on one side. Over the bar, there's a chandelier of all new guitars. And over the dance floor, there's a, there's a drum set where all kind of the lights kind of get it fixed. There's a, like a curio wall behind the bar with all these shelves of things you may find. You know, picture of Max Headroom to things that are kind of, kind of fun and funky to people that have either grown and lived the 80s, well, 80s, 90s, and 2000s, or people that have liked to want to sing the music and so on. That's gonna be the main theme and serve, you know, handmade, fresh-made burgers and, you know, really good upscale bar food.
Wow, sounds impressive. Will you have any karaoke, entertainment, anything like that?
You know, that's a good question. I think the concept does lend itself to, we don't have a stage per se. We're open to it. It's not currently on our, I guess, business plan to have that. But the more that we get to engage the guests, the better. So we'd be definitely open to that. That's a good question.
Good, and your hours of operation?
We're gonna start off, well, being in the Capitol District, which we're really happy to be there. But we'll be probably, Roxy, be open up. We'd like to be able to have the ability of from like 11 o'clock until bar close for, at lunch, when the, when the, I guess, the opportunity arises with events that are going on at the plethora of venues that are around. But typically 3 o'clock to 4 o'clock in the afternoon until, you know, maybe as early as 10 o'clock if it's a slow night, or on Friday or Saturday be done until we can legally stop selling.
And will you have happy hour or anything like that?
You know what, we, we would like to explore happy hour. When, right now we're doing our market research in terms of, you know, how does that fit in with the competition and with the, you know, the myriad of guests that will be drawn to us here. We will have that, but I will say though, for the record, we're not a, we're very much of a responsible service of alcohol. It's not going to be anything crazy, it'd be something complimentary to the locale and to the business. Responsible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Motion a second. No for the lights. Roll call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Milton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 10, to consider a Class C E liquor license for the Stuffed Olive located at 1100 Capitol Avenue, Suite 104.
Public hearing and vote on number 10 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes. Nice to see you again. It is Tony DiSalvo, 6027 University Avenue in Cedar Falls, Iowa, 50613.
Thank you.
And again, I'm Bailey Rose Cranz, an attorney at Panzing Hogan Ernst &amp; Boucher. 10250 Regency Circle, Suite 300. Same idea. We've submitted the application. We're here to answer any questions and ask for your approval.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing's closed. Ms. Johnson.
So we're moving from handmade hamburgers to some type of olive.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
So I would, with some Italian or, what, what are we gonna have here?
So Stuffed Olive. Stuffed Olive is a upscale casual martini bar. That has got small plates. So we've got over a hundred martinis that are on the list itself, all handmade. We have 150 in our library repertoire. And all handmade small plates with a couple larger plates thrown in, from salmon to handmade crab rangoons to goodness gracious, to filet mignon skewers, something in the price range of 12 to $15. So you go on in and you have a martini for happy hour and, or prior to going to the Steel House and have two or three small plates, share and have a good time. And maybe you go to Steel House and come back and have an afternoon cocktail and then maybe go to Roxy to go and dance.
Wow. So you are gonna have a happy hour here?
Yeah, yeah, we, we definitely wanna have a happy hour here. Yes, yes, ma'am.
And then, so if I wanted a chocolate raspberry martini, I probably could get that there?
Our number one seller is the Girl Scout Cookie and the Samores. And there's Almond Joy as well.
Oh, okay, wow, sounds, sounds impressive there.
Thank you.
All right, motion to approve.
Motion a second. Mr. Hug, you're recognized.
I'm asking this question for my wife tonight, 'cause she's gonna ask me when I get home tonight.
Yes, sir.
Are you gonna have a bikini martini?
A bikini martini?
A bikini martini.
You know what, if you let me know what it is, I'm sure we can make it.
Okay.
I'm sorry. We can make almost anything you want, how about that?
Okay, thank you. No for the lights. There's a motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Milton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thanks, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Item 11, to consider a Class M Bottle Club liquor license for Cloud Nine Billiards Club located at 13501 A Street. Is communication and support, is communications and opposition.
Public hearing and vote is today on number 11. Proponents, please.
Yes, Tommy Licarbo, live at 535 North 10th Avenue, Springfield, Nebraska.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing's closed. Mr. Harding.
Mr. President. Tommy, who's also known as Tommy the Professor, I believe, Licarbo. This is, this is, we'll have a lot of questions about this, Tommy, only because it's really the, the only bottle club liquor license that we've considered or even discussed in some time. And actually, the one other time, we almost acted on one. I think they ended up changing it to a regular license beforehand. So bear with, with me on some of the questions. But before I start, you and I had a chance to talk beforehand to, can you give us kind of the general idea of what your, what your hope, what you hope to do with this establishment or how it's going to be set up?
Okay, yes, sir, I'll give you a little background. So I've been a pool player since high school. Started out just playing wherever I could find a table. Turned that into competitive play about seven, eight years ago. I travel for my regular job, and I've been fortunate enough to visit lots of pool halls throughout the country. And then about two years ago, I was in Springfield, Missouri, and they had a private club. And it was called Anytime Billiards. So I thought, you know, I was just looking for a place to go shoot pool that night. I'd keep my sticks in my work truck. And I thought, well, how do I get in this place? You know, you just find them on, on social media. And so you pay a daily guest fee, you go in there, and it's, that's what it is. It's members only. So the idea clicked in my head. I thought, you know, I don't consume a lot of alcohol. This was a nice place, good equipment. And I thought, I came back to Omaha and I threw it out in our social media group for our local pool players. You know, what do you guys think about this idea? Well, we got 150 questions of when are you gonna open that? You know, so I wasn't planning on opening it. Did a lot of research, got to the point of, you know, this is financially feasible. And then, you know, so the idea, so that gives you the background of what, where this came from. The idea is that it's a membership base, so it's controlled access. So it's not open to the public. There's no walk-in business. Members would have to apply for a membership to come in. I would screen them. There's already members I will say that I will not allow to have a membership just because of their history and throughout the, the community just tend to be troublemakers. So that's not people that I want in my establishment. When you come into the building, it'll be very classy. It'll be kind of a low light area, two rows of four tables each, so eight tables. These are the best tables on the market that you can buy. These are professional-grade tables. We have some theater seating that's set up in there. You mentioned my nickname, the professor, the way he knows that is, like I mentioned, as a competitive player, I get put on a stream. We have a local guy that streams pool tournaments and events. So we have a booth set up in there for that. At some point, we do plan to invite some professionals out. The best player in the country lives in Sioux Falls, South Dakota. He is probably top five still in the world. Would love to have him down here to do lessons and just an exhibition-type thing for our members is just a perk of being a member with us. So that's the type of place and, and the clientele we're trying to attract. When you go into a bar, you typically have subpar equipment. You have holes with balls with holes in them, house sticks that are crooked. You know, our members spend $1,000 or more on their pool cue case. You know, they carry multiple cues with them. So this is kind of a lifestyle. So that, that's what we're trying to build and attract.
Okay. And then could you discuss then how the, how the alcohol would work then in your establishment? Being a, being a bottle club?
Yeah, so when I started this research into this, I wasn't sure what I would need for somebody to just be able to enjoy alcohol. I don't wanna be a bar. I don't, we will not sell. The only sales besides membership revenue coming in would be a vending machine with sodas and snacks in it. So if, but just like any other event, if you go bowling, you play darts, cornhole, you go to a ball game, people enjoy a beer, wine, whatever their preference is. So I didn't wanna restrict a member from being able to do that, so I asked the question. And I get told at work sometimes, don't ask the question, you don't want the answer to. So here I am, because I asked the question. But I wanna do this right. I was told that, well, we don't have anything like that here. We think you need to be a bottle club, which would allow you, members to bring their own. So the thought process would be if you're a member and you're coming, you would bring your own alcohol. I'll provide a fridge so they can keep it cold. And then, you know, you take your, your alcohol with you when you leave. But your competitive pool players are not getting to the point where they're irresponsible. You know, they're there for the purpose. The, the purpose is to be competitive, to play pool, billiards at a high level. People typically don't do that when they're intoxicated, so.
And, and the reason, I assume, and you and I talked a little bit about this too, is the reason why you're not going for a full liquor license and rather applying for the bottle club license is, and I think you just said a minute ago, is that you, you don't wanna be a bar and you don't wanna have, have to be able to, you know, do the hiring and staffing and my, so that, that was the reason, or one of the reasons why you went to the bottle club license application?
That is correct.
Okay. Could you tell me a little bit about, I think, the interview that you had with the, I think it was probably the state patrol as it related to some of the questions or some of the requirements that you were told that you would need to abide by?
Uh, yeah, so I did my interview with the state patrol officer, and he was a little unclear. So after our interview, he went back to the Liquor Control Commission and then returned a phone call to me. And basically, his main concern was how do we control, as, as the statute says, the 5:00 AM, the 6:00 AM, you know, no alcohol. And what he told me was as long as that fridge is there, they can get it out of their possession, I would be subject to local police coming in, you know, and inspecting the premises. And I would be fined if that was the case, or the member would be fined, whichever. But in our membership agreement and, and everything, we're gonna be making sure that people just aren't consuming during that one-hour timeframe. I really don't think we'll have a lot of people there from 5:00 AM to 6:00 AM. However, I will say that, you know, we do have shift workers that have applied for membership. So a guy that works 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM loves the idea of being able to come and play some pool and then go home, sleep before his next shift. You know, so there'll be people there at different hours of the day. The idea is to be 24/7 open. But again, these are the types of members that aren't consuming heavy alcohol.
Okay, thanks. If, if you don't mind, stick close, but now I'm gonna have Mr. Weason come up and who's with City Law to answer a couple of questions.
Okay.
Thanks. You can have a seat there.
Ryan Weason, Deputy City Attorney.
Thanks, Ryan. And I know, so we, we just got the, the, the membership agreement that Mr. Licarbo supplied or sent to us today. And I just wanted to go through a couple of items that you and I had discussed that might be of concern or if need further investigation, or I think maybe we have found some of the answers even since we discussed that earlier this morning. So could you kind of explain in the, in the bottle club application how the membership aspect of that would work? And maybe not so much specific to this, but in general terms?
Generally speaking, under the Nebraska Liquor Control Act, the idea of a bottle club is that it is limited to members only. It's not a place that is generally open to the public. And so as such, it contemplates having a membership list that's ready, laid in, viable, that has the names and addresses listed of, of members that are on the premises at all times so that, that can be checked. Something to that nature would generally be what would be considered a bottle club, is my understanding.
Okay. And then, we also then discussed the question of having a guest, which in, in the membership agreement, it, it states that a member can bring in a, one, it says one guest, and there's a fee for that. In the, in a club liquor license app, or a liquor license that would go with a, a club, I think there's specific language in there that guests of the member are allowed to consume alcohol. But in the, the statute for the bottle club, it does not specifically state that. And so I think one of the questions you and I had in discussing this earlier was whether or not the guest would be allowed to then consume the, the alcohol brought in by, by the member.
Yes, that's correct. There is some ambiguity in the state statute. The term bottle club as it's defined does not make reference to guests, while a separate definition for the term club does make reference to guests. However, another provision of the statute says that a club may operate as a bottle club. So that would imply that if a club can have guests, and if a club can also operate as a bottle club, that a bottle club can have guests that consume alcohol. So I put in a call to Holbert Rube, who's the Executive Director of the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, and try and get some guidance from him. He indicated to me that it was his opinion that a bottle club could, that the statute allows for a reasonable interpretation that a bottle club could have guests so long as there is a reasonable policy attached to it. It's my understanding from looking at the membership agreement for this particular bottle club that guests will be limited to one member per person. So that would indicate that a guest has to be sponsored by an existing member. There is a guest daily fee or a guest membership fee that has to be paid. It would be my, maybe assumption is the wrong word, but, but I would think that the Liquor Control Commission would probably look favorable, favorably upon this type of guest membership definition or operation. It ultimately is a state license. And so I would probably give deference to the state's interpretation of the statute in this case.
Okay. And again, the state's the one who ultimately would be approving or, well, approving the liquor license.
That is correct.
We're just a recommending body.
That is correct.
Yeah, okay. And then one of the things that we also discussed that actually Mr. Licarbo also brought up is, is the whole notion within the statute, not notion, but the, the statement within the statute that for a bottle club, it has to be closed from the hours of 5:00 to 6:00 AM. So, and I think you heard Mr. Licarbo say that in his discussions with the, the state trooper, who then went back to the commission, that maybe there's some ambiguity in, in that language as well too. So I'd like your reaction to that.
In my initial review or my understanding of, you know, the current requirements would be that a license holder would have to be closed between the hours of 5:00 and 6:00. It sounds like the state patrol through the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission believe that in this circumstance, so long as the alcohol is inaccessible or unavailable to patrons during that time, they feel that there would be, the spirit of the law or the law itself would be satisfied. Again, perhaps there's some ambiguity in the requirements under that statute, but ultimately it is the state's license, and if it's the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission... And if it's the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission who is interpreting it and their interpretation is that so long as the alcohol or liquor is inaccessible during that time period that they are complying with that requirement to be closed from 5:00 to 6:00, then, um, their interpretation would likely be given some deference.
So as the city law representative, would you suggest that this council consider an amendment to the application to have that, have the establishment closed during that time or leave it up to the liquor commission? Because it's, uh, ultimately it's going to be their interpretation anyway. That they could amend that out then at the, at the hearing for the, the license?
Certainly an amendment of the application to provide that the establishment would be closed between 5:00 AM and 6:00 AM would make things cleaner and clearer. However, um, should the applicant decline to, uh, offer or accept that kind of amendment and pursue a 24-hour, seven-day, uh, business model at the commission, um, that would be within the purview of the applicant and it would be up to the commission to determine whether or not that is acceptable for the license or not.
So I, I want to be clear then. So if we, if we make that amendment and it, and it were to pass, the, the liquor commission could still, if you will, overrule that?
Well, as in all liquor license, uh, applications, if an applicant holder agrees to an amendment of the application at the local governing body stage before the city council, then that would become a part of the application going forward. Should the applicant then go down to the commission and try and walk that back or change it back to the initial thing? That may not be necessarily a violation of the liquor control statutes or regulations, but we do have a local ordinance that says that you have to be honest and tell the truth when you are making statements to the council in furtherance of seeking a liquor license. Um, that could go to an applicant's honesty and character and integrity to follow, uh, you know, rules and regulations. So it might speak to other things. Um, I don't, I'm not really aware of that situation ever really happening in the past. I think once an applicant agrees to something before the council, they generally stick to it.
Okay. All right. I, I'm not sure where I'm going to go on that, that part of it yet. But, um, if I could have, um, Mr. Licarbo come back up at, at this point, or actually before that. Ryan, was there anything else that you and I discussed that, that you think we should?
Only the, the reminder that, uh, bottle club licenses, as with all licenses under the Liquor Control Act, uh, are subject to the regulation that if law enforcement show up, shows up, that they have to be allowed entry onto the premises. It looks like the state patrol has already discussed that with this applicant. And that failure to allow, uh, a law enforcement officer, police officer who shows up to entry into the premises could be a violation that they could, uh, be sanctioned for.
Thank you, and I'm glad I asked that because that's kind of exactly where I was going to go with, with, uh, Mr. Licarbo. If I could have Tommy, if you could come back up. I, I'm not sure if you caught everything that Mr. Wiesen just said about allowing access. Um, since you are probably, and you don't have a manager or are not going to be on the premises 24/7, or maybe 23/7, um, I, I might suggest that you put in your membership agreement because you have, you're very, I think, clear as to, you know, if there, whatever violations might occur, that their membership can be revoked. And again, if, if for some reason the police are showing up at 10 o'clock at night and you're not there, the members need to know that they have to allow law enforcement to be able to come in. So I might suggest that in your membership agreement, that you include a paragraph so that all your members know that that's, that, that's their responsibility to be, to let them in if they, if they show up.
Uh, yes, sir. And the membership agreement, um, I provided that about 10 minutes before I walked out the door to head here today. It was requested. Uh, so there, there are a few changes and things like that to be added to it. Uh, I'm, I'm not ready to open, so I was still kind of fine tuning that, so I'll definitely get that added in there.
So let me, let me ask you then about this, um, this hour. Um, if, if we were to suggest an amendment that would, um, require your establishment then to be closed, um, for that hour as, as what's in the statute, um, would, would you be okay with that?
Uh, my final answer would be yes, but before I say that, uh, I mean, I would prefer to be open 24/7. And I would prefer to be able to control the alcohol consumption from 5:00 to 6:00 if that's permissible. Uh, I don't want to risk, um, a full, you know, approval on the license for that one circumstance, so.
The reason I'm not sure I, I want to make that amendment is, is because, um, if, if you've been, you, you've been very diligent, I think, in your approach here and, and very thorough. And, and I know when you and I were talking to, um, that you, you've talked to a number of people, have given you some advice and, and you even approached this subject already with the, the state, uh, trooper. And it sounds like you were given some information that would be a little contrary to the amendment I might propose. And I don't know that that's fair to do to you, uh, since you've, you know, you asked the question and you've been given certain advice from the trooper who also went back to the commission to get their kind of initial read on it. So again, I'm, I, I'm not going to go there yet, but I know there's some other lights on. So I'll contemplate that while some others are speaking, but it, it's still something I might ask for later on here today.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Milton.
Thank you. Well, I guess I, here's where I am, am kind of going. I have no problem with the kind of concept that you have, understanding that you don't want to be a bar, but if people want to bring some beer, wine in, or, you know, a cocktail while they're playing pool, you want to allow them to do that. My concern would be that people would get memberships to your place so that at 2:00 AM, when the bars close, they then wander on over to your place and then they continue to have cocktail hour from 2:00 AM to 4:00 AM potentially. Because I, I've seen that happen in other places that don't have licenses, but needless to say, people do that. Would you be willing to put in your membership agreement that there's no alcohol use between 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM? I understand the people getting off work at 6:00 AM, like, that's their end of the evening. So they may want to have, you know, a beer or, you know, whatever, and play a game of pool at the 7:00 AM when they get off their shift. I don't have a problem with that, but normal bars, I would rather see no alcohol use between 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM. I think that would be, and, and your benefit too, because I could also see that's not your intention to make your place the party place for after hours, but it could turn into that.
So, so I've thought about that and whether it'll be directly with me being there in the building or another trusted person. Um, and, uh, or me monitoring it remotely through video. Um, I've thought about all that, uh, and how to enforce that. And if I see that going on, those are the type of people that I'll say, you know, thanks, but no thanks. We don't need your membership, you know, because we don't want to have that perception of that's what's going on here. Um, I guess to answer your question, same type of answer. If that's going to be what's required of me to open for business and to be able to allow this concept, I would do that. Um, I'd rather stick to what the statute says, you know, if possible, and, and control that consumption from 5:00 to 6:00. Uh, I think I'd be successful in doing that. Um, but if it would mean not getting a license and just telling someone they couldn't bring that during the other hours, um, then, um, then I, I would submit to that, yes.
Yeah, I mean, my, I don't have a problem because I think just closing for one hour doesn't really do. I mean, I, I don't know that that would impact anything, 5:00 to 6:00. My, my problem is that alcohol use between 2:00 and 6:00 that I think could become problematic.
Yeah.
Other bars can't have it. You don't want to be a bar owner, right? And because you don't want that responsibility, I guess my suggestion would be to limit allowing people to drink between 2:00 and 6:00 so that you don't have the problems that I, I understand. I, you standing here today, that's not your intention. Um, but I think there might be other people that you'll end up having an incident that, that it's not your intention, but that's what people will start doing. And, and my opinion is if they've already been drinking, now they're drinking after 2:00. Now we're running into that problem of, you know, now we've got the drinking and driving going on at 4:00 AM in the morning and that kind of thing. So I think I would, I would like to see that you at least follow bar rules for use of alcohol.
Okay. I fully understand your concern.
And stay open 24/7.
You know, if that's what's required, I'm glad to do it.
But yeah, I, I, I support the idea and I think what you're doing sounds like a, a great, you know, a great idea.
I think having that concession as opposed to no alcohol, I, I would lose a lot more members by saying you just can't bring a beer in here. Uh, as opposed to saying, well, you just can't have it from 2:00 to 6:00. Uh, I think 90% of my members, you know, I might lose one or two, uh, that, that have already signed up, you know, or, or applied to some, to be a member. Um, that might be a concern to them. And if so, well, then that was a good screening, so now they're out, you know. So, yeah, the goal is to not attract that and, and I do fully understand your concern. And if that's the way I need to go, I'm glad to do that.
Yeah, that's my, I mean, that's my only concern. It, it's just the alcohol use after the bars close. I just don't want to see that happen.
Yep.
So even if it's just a rule that you have on your own, I mean, I would prefer to see it as part of the license, but police can come in at any time. I just think, hold yourself to the same kind of bar standards for purposes of alcohol use and limit it to, cut it off at 2:00 AM.
So just for clarification, back to what Mr. Harding said, have that as part of the membership agreement from 2:00 to 6:00, 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM, zero alcohol consumption, but I would be able to stay open.
Yeah, I mean, and you can do it by your own policy. I mean, I'm not, I'm not necessarily one that wants to say I'm going to force business owners to, to do things, but I think it would make sense and I think it would kind of save you further headaches. Because I said on the law committee, we, we're the ones that call, um, liquor license holders in for problems. Um, and, you know, we have problem bars in, all over our city. So there's some in out in Westdome, huh, too, that we're having issues with. Um, so it's, it's not about the location. It's just that some people will see this as an opportunity to have after hours and play pool and continue to drink. And I, I don't think you want that. I don't think you want that liability. It would just make more sense to me if you put that in your membership, that your personal policy as a business owner is no alcohol between 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM. And, you know, I think you'll avoid all the potential issues.
And I'll go back to the statement I made earlier about, don't ask the question you don't want the answer to. That's when I started pursuing this idea. Um, you know, so when I asked the question about, do I need a liquor license, what's required to allow this to happen? You know, and, and started going down this road, uh, you know, I looked up the definition of a bottle club. And the definition of a bottle club, um, I've got it written down here, I'll put my readers on. But anyways, uh, is a place that's solely, uh, I forget exactly how it's worded, so excuse me, but its primary purposes for the intentional consumption of alcohol. And our intention and primary purposes for the play of billiards, the alcohol is a sidebar. So I agree, you know, so I, I'm willing to do that if, if that's what's asked and, and you think is best. I will gladly amend the member agreement to say that and I'll enforce it.
I'd appreciate that. I, I think it'd make everybody happier, I think, at this point, even with the one, the one letter in opposition. I think that is a little different, but I'd also maybe meet with some of the other owners in the area.
Okay.
But that would, that to me would solve any problem that I have with what you're doing. It's just no alcohol between 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM. And stay open 24/7.
That's very fair.
No, thank you.
And you mentioned the letter of opposition. I was able to see that online. Uh, is there a need for me to address some of those concerns or?
No, I, excuse me, if I may, answer his question. Uh, no, I, I. I would think as a good, you seem like a, a good owner. You don't want people, I guess, trashing and, and, and doing things around your property if any of your members are doing that. Nice thing is you have a membership, unlike someplace that's open to the public. You know, a regular bar owner isn't going to know who's there.
Right.
You're going to know every single person that comes in and out of your building. So I would assume if the other places are having issues, you're going to know whether it was your people or not. And actually, maybe having your place open, uh, might help solve some of the issues that that opposition was complaining about because now there's going to be people around. And if they see someone graffitiing something, I, my guess is one of your members might call the police or call somebody to come down. So I think having a presence there in the evening might actually help the problems that the, the opposition, uh, was stating.
Uh, I, I agree with you and those are, uh, the majority of the bullet points I wrote down as well. Um, it is an industrial area and, uh, there, I've been there till midnight for the last two months working on this place. And, uh, you know, there's a couple of comments in there about that. And, uh, I haven't seen anybody driving 70 miles an hour. I, I got, was curious, so I got on Google Earth and, uh, I printed out the map and the distance showing it's .33 miles is the length of a street in that area. Uh, there's a 90-degree turn at both ends, so I think people racing at 70 miles an hour is an inaccurate, uh, statement. Um, and then as far as the vandalism and, and problems that they're having on their property, I agree. I think just having lights on and having people coming and going to our establishment will prevent that because they'll see that. In addition to, uh, when I talked to the state patrol officer, uh, they will be doing patrols. They would come in and, and inspect. Uh, so having a police presence there more and having us on that radar, I think will probably solve some of this neighbor's problems, so.
I, I agree. I think you'll benefit the neighbors, actually, by being there. As long as there's no alcohol usage between tunes.
Yeah. And, and just, uh, you know, I was going through my member list, um, applicant list. And, you know, so part of the bottle club, uh, requirement is to have addresses and all that. So that's all part of my, when someone signs up, so I'm gathering all that information. I'll capture this, have it readily available. But I got to looking at it. And just to give you an idea of the clientele, the members that, that we're looking at having, on this list of 55 applicants, 12 are local business owners. So, you know, these are people that are well-established in the community. Some as long as 30 years have been operating their business. And then, then the, the older, you know, I'm 46, so middle-aged, I guess you'd say. But, uh, there, there's more than half of this list that are people that are older than me. You know, so these are people that aren't necessarily going out and causing trouble at the bars, I would say typically. So, so I think that helps with the neighbors' concerns. And, uh, we actually, so it's Catholic radio station, uh, that, that addressed or propos, uh, opposed and made that, uh, sent that letter. Uh, one of our members is a pastor at a church and, which is great for him, you know, because he's like, I can come in there. I don't have to deal with the, the bar and, and the atmosphere. And, uh, he's like, you know, once you get open and approved, I think I'm going to go down there and just talk to them. And, and mend whatever fences might need to be mended if, if, uh, were approved and, and they still oppose us. You know, just bring them down and, and just introduce them and just say, here's what's going on here. You know, so, so that's some of the approaches and, uh, a little bit of the rebuttal I wanted to do as far as that opposition.
I think you're a, you're a different kind of bottle club than what we've seen previously.
Yes.
So that may be where the concern was, was coming from. So I think what you're doing is.
And when I applied, the, the lady at the Liquor Control Commission, she said, well, there's only one other one in the state, so this is rare. So we were figuring it out together, but.
Okay. Well, I, actually, my sister helped amend that statute, so I'm, I'm well aware of the bottle club bill. So, no, I, I appreciate it. I, I wish you the best and I wish you success and I, and, and I think what you're doing is, is a great, it's a great club for people that want to go play pool and don't want to just do it in their basement or in a bar.
And I mentioned the one in Springfield, Missouri. Uh, sorry, I know we're taking a lot of time here, but, uh, there's another one of these in, uh, Des Moines, Iowa, Aberdeen, South Dakota, Billings, Montana, uh, and Minneapolis just opened one. They're all successful, all same concept, uh, all for the competitive players, you know. Um, I've talked with all those owners, I've been to two of them and, and same concept, same idea, works very well.
Well, I, I definitely wish you the best. Um, I, we have a pool table in my house and my son tells me, Mom, just don't even bother, right? I'm not a good pool player. But, uh, maybe it's, it's someplace that, you know, father and son may want to go to and play some pool and, you know, maybe meet with some other people and, you know, have, have a good time where you're not necessarily in a bar situation. So that's the only other, my, that brings me to my only other question. Um, how are you going to monitor underage people from drinking, uh, bringing it in?
So underage people won't be allowed to have a membership without a parent or guardian.
Okay. So they would have to have a parent or guardian with them?
Correct.
Okay. That was my last question.
And we do have a great juniors program in Omaha, so I fully expect to have them. I've got, uh, two families that have already registered, you know, so mom, dad and child. Um, we have juniors in this area that go to national events. Uh, one of our locals out of Lincoln just placed second in the whole country, uh, in an event in Quincy, Illinois. Uh, so that's definitely something we want to look at doing too, is promote junior billiards and education. That goes back to the bringing the professionals in for training and such like that, so.
I think that's great.
Yep.
Wish us success.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Begley, I think you're next in the queue.
Thanks.
Or is, is Mr. Rowe in the queue there? My, my light's a little bit off. Go ahead, Mr. Rowe.
Thanks. Thanks for that. I just had a couple of practical, practical questions. Um, what is the capacity of the facility there? I mean, how many people, how many players could you have there at one particular time?
Yeah, so, um, a good table to member ratio, I think, just overall would be eight to one, meaning, uh, no more than, uh, 64 members, eight, eight members per eight tables. Uh, but they would not all be there at the same time. Uh, I'm going through the inspection and certificate of occupancy process now to figure out what that count would be. So, uh, in theory, uh, if eight tables were playing and there was two people playing a game on each table, that would be 16 players playing at any given time.
be sixteen players playing at any given time. I have enough seating for forty-two, which, but includes that sixteen. So there's, there's bar stools set up next to each table. So in addition to that sixteen, I have, you know, like I said, a total of forty-two seats in the place.
Okay. And then my other question was, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned. I love the concept. I mean, we all have friends and relatives that love the idea that you've put together, the business plans. Pretty cool. But, you know, assuming that you're open twenty-four seven, or twenty-three seven, or whatever it is, I'm a little concerned about, you know, when those busiest times, like, when is the busiest time? Is it going to be the weekend nights? Is it going to be a Friday night deal, and you're going to have sixty-five people in the club? And I'm wondering if you have any thoughts of security or supervision of some sort, even if you're, even though you're not a bar, but just to, if things would happen to get out of hand, a couple of guys get a little too competitive?
Yeah. Yeah, so I don't think realistically we'd ever get to full capacity, because it wouldn't be, like I said, open for people to just walk in. So that would mean all sixty-four possible members would have to all say, let's go to this place tonight. That's very unlikely. So I'm never expecting to have that. In addition to, if the guys want to play pool and there's only possible sixteen people playing, what's the math, forty-eight people aren't going to sit around and wait for two or three hours to wait to play. You may get a couple of people that wait. You may be, you know, have them rotating in and out. So I don't ever see our capacity getting that high. The other two that I've visited, half the tables were vacant during the times that I was there. So I kind of expect us to be similar to that from an occupancy. The reason for eight tables is to, you know, it comes down to revenue. How many people could I have as members? That eight to one is what seems to work for these other locations. So that's why I've kind of based this membership and the, the cost of it, finding a building that can support that at that, that number. So when we run a tournament, we have two different types of tables. We have seven-foot tables, nine-foot tables. A typical tournament's run on one size or the other. So that would mean you typically have four times people than the number of tables that you're playing on. So if I'm only playing on four seven-foot tables, I wouldn't expect to have more than sixteen people in a tournament. Same thing for the nine footers. If I were to do a combined tournament, which would be a little different for this area, I have some ideas on it. That would be thirty-two people in the building at the time, which would be half of our membership. So I really think thirty-two plus myself and maybe the guy doing the streaming, you know, so let's say thirty-five people, would probably be a max.
Okay. I know that Jim was the guy that you, you talked to, and I appreciate your willingness to communicate with him. I think that's really important, if you, you know, engage the, the neighbors in the, in the area. That's going to be important. I was, the, the last question I had was about maintenance of the grounds, because that did come up, you know, or do you have provisions for nightly cleanup and, you know, patrolling the parking lot and that kind of thing?
So part of our, so trash cans will be provided. We have a smoking cigarette butt receptacle outside already. Members, part of the membership agreement asks them to maintain and take care of themselves. Myself or somebody will be there on a daily basis to monitor, inspect the place, do whatever cleaning is necessary. Restrooms are cleaned by the landlord. They're shared restrooms. The outdoor is basically parking lot of the very small grass area. But all general maintenance of the place is taken care of by the landlord.
Okay. I think that's all I had.
Thank you, Mr. Begley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon. Just a couple of questions for you. This, and Councilmember Harding, I snuck over and whispered to him, and he confirmed this is in the middle of like a commercial industrial area, correct? So the homeowner properties are, is it like Grover on the north, which is not included in this immediate area? Is that correct?
Yeah, so this is what you, when I was searching real estate, this is what they call commercial flex. So meaning office slash warehouse type space is what I was looking for, because typically you need a wide-open building, not something with supporting walls and stuff. So that, that's what we had to kind of search for. And so, so to answer your question, yes, more businesses up and down the street. The residences are, so where we're at on A Street, there's businesses across the other side of A Street from us, and then there's the property line there turns into residential, but there's no connecting streets into that residential.
Okay.
And I believe it's a six-foot chain link fence behind those businesses.
Okay, and you, you led me into my second question. You just answered, thank you, that this doesn't connect to the, I can't, I put Brinker on the spot. Is it Westwood? Is it Kingswood, the neighborhood to the north of there?
I do not know the-
That's okay.
I, I can tell you. Explain to her where it's at.
I, I've been there, actually. I'm just, because in my endeavors, in my daytime job, when I'm not doing this one, which is all the time, I've been in that area, and I know it's industrial, and I know that neighborhood to the north, so that, I just wanted to make sure my mind was clear on that. So you said you had fifty-five applicants, I think, right, and eleven or twelve local business owners?
Correct, yes.
Do you provide, I'm just curious, do you provide lessons at all? Will, will people be able to take billiard lessons from your club?
Not from me directly. I mean, I'll help anybody that wants my knowledge, but we have, like I mentioned, professional players that live within a few hours of here. There was actually a huge professional tournament last month in Des Moines, and, and I did talk to them. We weren't open for business yet, but had we been, and maybe for next year, when they come to Des Moines, bring some of them over for lessons. And there are, there are other top-level amateurs within our region that do provide lessons. So, so we will have instruction going on. And that'll be just set up with whether I put on a clinic, meaning, hey, I'm going to have this instructor here who wants to come in on a Saturday from, you know, noon to four, this is the cost for that, that instruction, or whether that's a, a member bringing his own instructor in, which we would treat that instructor as a guest, assuming they're not consuming alcohol and all that type of stuff while they're taking lessons. But, so, yeah, so there will, there will be instruction going on there.
Okay. And I know also that you said, so the average age was forty-six, so my favorite movie as a kid was A Color of Money in nineteen eighty-six. Then when I bought a house, of course, I bought a pool table and realized that I'm older than forty-six and the lessons are too late for me. But I, I like the concept of what you've articulated here today, and that you guys travel to tournaments. I think that's pretty fascinating. And you do seem like you're cognizant. You want to be a good owner, and you want to be respectful of the businesses around you. As we've indicated, there's not homeowners for a few blocks away, so you're kind of buffered in that respect. And I think my colleagues covered a lot of the other things that I wanted to ask, but I, I appreciate you coming down and, and taking the time to explain it, because as I was listening to you here today, you know, I had read the agenda and what your concept was, and when we saw bottle club, I, what do we have, maybe a handful of those in town or less. So it's a unique thing. But some of the issues we run into potentially, I think you've done a good job of addressing that here today, that you already recognize those things. And you don't want to go in there, I'm assuming, to have trouble. It's, it's, is it eight tables you'll have?
Correct.
Is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay, and is it, is it just one floor?
It's all one floor, yes.
Okay, you might have covered that earlier, but when I was reading, I, I kind of drifted in and out of what you might have been saying. So if you were a pink yourself, I appreciate you just-
No, no problem.
-clarifying that. And, and I, I think that's, that's important, that you laid all that out here today, at least for me, to understand that better. So I appreciate you coming down and taking the time to do that.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hug.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
So it's, what I'm hearing, what, what your intention is, is, is not to store liquor for club members on premises?
Correct.
All right, so you won't have the little lockbox with the key and?
No, matter of fact, the, the club that I mentioned in Billings, Montana rents refrigerators out to their members, and I am not going to do that.
Okay.
So, so no. If, if you bring it in, please take it when you leave. If I come in and it's unattended, it's going to get thrown away.
All right. My next question has nothing to do with your license application, just my own personal curiosity. Is there a appeal process for those individuals that ask for membership or declined?
An appeal process for them?
Yeah.
Well, I, I figured there would be some pushback if I ever deny someone. I'm kind of hoping that the people that, I've advertised this as, exactly as I described today, it's, it's not a bar, it's not a place for you to come and get silly. You know, it, it is primarily for billiards. And I'm hoping to keep those members away. Should I have to deny someone or eventually revoke a membership? I have a board of governors of myself, but I have two other business owners that, that are on my membership list that would make, help me make those decisions. So if, if there was a problem that came up with a member, I would put it to them first. If they were split decision, then I would be the deciding factor. So that, that's not necessarily a formal written appeal process, but that's how I plan to, to address any member issues that-
Okay. Will there be a formal written appeal process? And again, this has nothing to do with your application. This is my, me personally asking you a question.
I, I had not intended to. I can talk with them, or if the council thinks that's a good idea. I think it's a good idea.
Well, again, this is just me talking.
No, I understand.
I'm not talking to the councilmen.
Yeah, okay.
Just me personally.
I had no intention of doing that. I like what you're saying, and, and it may be considered.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for bringing forward, forward this innovative business opportunity for the city of Omaha. Appreciate that. There's been a lot of discussion since you stepped up to the microphone today, so I just want to put things in order in terms of point of clarification. This body is here to just make a recommendation of your license. And just so that we're clear, your application says that you're going to be in operation twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. My colleagues have made some suggestions to you to modify that, but that's totally up to you as to what you want to do. So again, our, our, our roles here is to recommend the liquor license will approve or deny your application. Just want to make sure that you understand what your rights are.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Harding.
Thanks, Tommy. I appreciate all the information you've been able to, to give us and the responses to the questions, too. I think you've been very, very thorough, and I think, you know, it's very obvious, the amount of attention you've, you've given us and the endeavor you're, you're trying to set out on. And as, as you and I talked at the beginning, too, I mean, this is a very rare request, and so I appreciate your patience in, in hearing our questions as well, too, because I think, because it is so rare, we want to make sure we're doing the right thing as well, too. But I guess, one question, one comment. On, on the tournaments that you have, if, if someone's coming into the building to view the tournaments, I, I assume, will the, the membership be like a, a cover charge to come in for that? Or is that, how, how are you anticipating handling the tournaments and the people that might want to come and observe?
So, so there'd be no charge for a member to play in a tournament?
Right.
But I think what you asked me earlier is what you're referring to is if they were to bring a guest-
Yes.
-to watch them. So if, if a person were to bring their spouse to watch them, I don't feel right charging them to do that. But from a, a guest list perspective, I would ask for them to sign in. So similar to going into like a BFW or an Eagles Club, where you typically have to sign a book to come in, I need to be able to capture who those people who are not on my member list are, so.
Would they be able to consume?
I guess my thoughts would be yes, but I'm not sure if that's how that falls into play with the statute.
Yeah, that's, that was, that was going to be, be my question. So just, if you will, bear with me. Ryan, can I have you come up and, could you address that portion of it? Because I, I think there, I'll let you answer it first before I say.
Ryan Leeson, Deputy City Attorney, I can try, although I don't know if there's really a good answer to that in, in the statute. Again, I think there is some ambiguity, and the Liquor Control Commission has indicated, or at least Hobie, Mr. Rupes indicated, that so long as the guest policy is reasonable, he would feel that it would be permitted under the existing statute.
Okay.
You know, what, what is reasonable? The membership agreement, as it stated, talks about guest memberships that have to be sponsored by a person and pay a twenty-dollar fee. I think that is something that would probably clearly be reasonable to the commission. We start expanding upon that and saying, well, okay, it's a spouse of a, of a member, and they don't have to pay a fee, but that, they can also bring in alcohol and drink. Maybe that gets into the more unreasonable territory. It's kind of a sliding scale. And I don't know that, because these are so new, I, I have no case law, I have no regulations that interpret it, I have no history with the commission to interpret it. So there is some ambiguity there, and that just might be one of those things that has to be worked through.
Okay. All right. Tommy, I'll have you come back up, please. So I'm not going to ask for, for an amendment on the, the hours of five to six, as we discussed earlier, in part because, and I'm not going to ask for it be part of the, or an amendment that would go to the commission stating no alcohol from two to six. But since you have agreed on the record that that is going to be your policy and that you will include that in there, again, we'll, we'll take you at your word for that, and it's on the record as such. So I'm not going to ask for the amendment covering that. As it relates to the tournaments, because of the ambiguity in what Mr. Leeson just said, I would suggest that in your, in those tournaments, that you should have probably a daily membership for all those that attend, so that you could make sure that you're in compliance with the, the bottle club regulations. So it could be in, in my estimation, I'm not an attorney, and I'm not going to give you legal advice either, but I would assume some nominal fee would be appropriate. But as you suggested and, and stated, that you would make sure that they are signed into the book then as well?
That is correct.
Okay.
And when I first-
Will you agree, will you agree to that on the record?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
And when I stated as a guest, I meant that as a pool-playing guest. The, the spectator, if you will, wasn't in my head until you asked the question.
Yeah. But I think the spectator, if they, if they want to-
I agree.
-come and watch someone in a tournament and, and still consume something, I think to make sure that we're comfortable with being in compliance with the, the intent of the statute, that you should be charging some sort of a, a fee for that, if you will, daily membership, and make sure that they're logged into the book as such.
All right.
And you'll agree to that.
Yes, sir, I will.
Okay. I'll move for approval.
No, I'll second. I just had one more comment.
I'm going to second that. I appreciate you working with us. What I prefer is I prefer that the business owner makes those decisions and that you handle it as part of policy for these particular things. That, that's how I, and I appreciate you, your willingness to do that, as opposed to, for, right now, the way you're handling your business, as opposed to trying to force it on you as part of the license, I would prefer that you put it in your, in your membership and make it your policy, so that it's yours and you own it.
Right.
So I appreciate you taking our, taking our advice and, and suggestions.
Yep. And, and with that, I mean, I, I appreciate the suggestions. I think they'll help make the business more successful, so thank you.
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second to approve, and no for delays. Roll call.
Rowe, Begley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton.
Yep.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, councilmembers. Appreciate your time.
Items twelve through seventeen can be considered together for Saddle Creek Campus, located southwest of Farnham Street and Saddle Creek Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Items twelve through fourteen, ordinances to rezone this property from Geo District, GC District, and GI District to CC District, TOD Two MX District, and TOD One MX District. Item fifteen, an ordinance to rescind the ACI II overlay district for this property. Item sixteen, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item seventeen, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and votes on items twelve through seventeen are today. Proponents, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, Larry Jovan, one hundred and fourteen forty, West Center Road, appearing on behalf of UNMC, and this is the UNMC Saddle Creek Campus project. With me today is Luke Weatherly of Olson, the consulting engineers on this particular project. We're really here to answer questions. This is the final plat rezoning, et cetera, for this project that's been in the making for several years, actually. So I think we're all excited. I think if you drive by there, you see the vertical construction going up, and some of the infrastructure is also being installed. So with that, it's pretty straightforward. It's a seven-lot plat. We're here for questions that you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other proponents today. Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing's closed. Mr. Bagley.
Thanks, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. Jovan, I guess I'll ask Luke this. I'll give you a break today, but stay, stay close by. Luke, good afternoon. Thanks for coming down today. I know this is, Mr. Jovan had already mentioned, the construction is clearly underway there. I live about four blocks from here and I see it daily. The growing pains of a great infrastructure that's being developed for our wonderful Nebraska Medical Center. Can you just touch on real quick, um, the, what this, it's the hub of the med center. So just briefly remind everybody what, in your map there, the innovation hub?
Sure.
And basically what this is? You got administration billing in the hub for innovation, so just kind of touch on that briefly for us today.
Absolutely. Um, I guess formalities. Luke Weatherly with Olson, representing UNMC Nebraska Medicine, 2111 South 67th Street. Uh, we're what you would consider kind of the global project manager for this community project is how we refer to it quite a bit. There's a couple other consultants that are integral to the design of this process with FHU or Felsberg Holm Nulvig for the 46th Street, um, portion of the project, which is...
Move this over.
Which is on the northern portion here. I'm going to zoom out. Okay. Um, as I mentioned, FHU was the design partner for the northern portion, which can sit, which took into effect, uh, Farnham Street here and widening in some turn lanes, as well as 46th Street and the traditional intersection at the northern end. Uh, Olson was the lead design engineer for the middle section, which is 46th Street, as well as the Emily Street connection over to Saddle Creek and then the connection down to Saddle Creek here. Alfred Benish Company is the design engineer for Saddle Creek and, um, Leavenworth towards the south end of the project. And the whole crux of this district is that it's, as you mentioned, an innovation hub for campus. It's an extension of UNMC's campus. As we know, they have, um, a lot of urban infill projects. This is, this was previously the steel casting development site. Um, a large portion of this site has been acquired over a number of years and they've had a couple of false starts in getting developers to come online with this. So UNMC has taken it upon themselves to develop it, uh, by themselves, I shouldn't say by themselves, uh, in corporate cooperation with the city, actually. Um, there's an interlocal agreement for some of the infrastructure projects in here, um, to help provide some of that, um, infrastructure for what I mentioned as the innova- innovation hub, the catalyst, which is being developed by one developer. Um, the thought of that is kind of biomedical startup companies that can come in, um, keep the, the smart intelligent people here and not have those people flock to Chicago or San Diego or, or one of the coasts. So that's the idea of this building that is a adaptive reuse building. Um, Ali Poyner was the architect on that project and you can see it now. It's kind of skin and bones right now, um, but it'll start to come back up when they, they put the walls around it. Um, as we move to the north, there's a parking garage in the middle of the, the campus that will support, uh, a number of buildings. That is also included with the interlocal cooperation agreement with the city. There are some funds allocated for that that, that will be a city-owned parking garage and that's in design currently, so that construction hasn't started. And then the previously mentioned, uh, admin building has changed names to the core building, which I believe refers to the Center of Operational Research and Excellence. Um, so just another acronym that we all have to get used to, but that is a lab space. Um, and similar with the, uh, innovation hub, that is meant to rent out some of those lab spaces and have spec space available for those companies to come in. Um, there's not a lot of availability for that in our region right now. I think the closest is Chicago is what I've heard. So, um, there will be a small component of the ad- administration function of that building, but a majority of that will be lab space for UNMC.
Great explanation and you touch on a lot of things there. One of the, I'll, I'll just start in the north real quick. 46th and Farnham, confirm there is no roundabout there because I know that was talked about early on and...
Correct.
Just to clear that up here, there is no roundabout going to be put in by Rat Skelter there?
Correct. There is no roundabout, uh, plan there. It was in the initial concept designs, uh, that were put forward as we worked our way through engineering on it. The grades of the roads, uh, specifically Farnham coming in from the west was too steep, um, which would have required flattening out that entire intersection. And by flattening that out to meet ADA requirements, it would have meant raising the intersection by somewhere in the order of eight to 10 feet, which would have put Rat Skeller, which is an existing business planned to stay, kind of down in a hole. Um, it just didn't seem feasible and like the right option at that point. Um, looking at it with our traffic engineers as well as City Public Works, the decision was, was made to move forward with a traditional intersection, um, four-way stop versus a roundabout.
And I, I know, um, the owner there, he's excited to get this done as we all are. And as I mentioned, I live four blocks away from here, so from time to time, in fact, my kids will give me a hard time about the congestion going on Saddle Creek and Leavenworth and Farnham. And it, it is, it's the expansion of the med center. It's, it's jobs, it's construction, it's building that area and that old steel mill that you mentioned, uh, the steel casting.
Yep.
That sat was an eyesore for a long time. So the great investment with the jobs you were talking about, I mean, it's, it's great things happening there. I got a question for Mr. Fanslaw really quick.
Sure.
Dave Fanslaw, City Planning.
Good afternoon, Dave. Um, so tell me where the TOD line is in proportion to where this is being built.
Um, TOD runs along Dodge Street. So just a few blocks.
Two or three blocks.
Correct. North of here, yes.
Okay. And also, thanks, Mr. Fanslaw. Um, Luke, the other question I wanted to ask you, are there connections of bike trails that are eventually in this master plan that's going to happen here with the med center?
Absolutely. Um, so UNMC and the City of Omaha jointly put in an application for, uh, TAP funding through the state and were recently awarded that in TAP, Transportation Alternatives, um, program. And they were awarded $13 million for the, what's, what's actually referred to as the Midtown Medical Center Bike Way, which will connect the Field Club Trail, which if you've been in the area, I know you have, um, right now terminates at Leavenworth Street. So part of that Midtown Medical Center Bike Way is to include a pedestrian and cycle overpass to Emily Street, which would then connect down through campus on Emily Street here with another, um, cycle and pedestrian overpass on Saddle Creek here as crossing Saddle Creek is historically pretty dangerous for pedestrians and bicyclists. One part of the 46th Street design is to include a multi-use path. Um, some would for, would refer to it as a cycle track, um, on the east side. So it's a dedicated lane for bicyclists and pedestrians on the east side of 46th, which would come down to the terminus of Jones Street at that point. Um, one of the recommendation items was to continue coordination with Planning and Public Works on the 48th Street connection up to what is Howard Street. Those are some pretty critical links in the, the bike path and we are continuing that coordination, um, and having some prelim conversations with Derek Miller, um, and Kevin Carter in long-range planning. Um, and we hope that that second section on 48th Street and potentially even Howard Street could be another round of, of TAP funding in the future.
No, that, that's great explanation on that. It's a good refresher because this is, we've talked about this. In fact, I had a meeting at the Elmwood Tower last week and some of the faithful there were asking what's going on on Leavenworth and Saddle Creek down there. So we had a nice discussion last Thursday, I think it was. But again, when I talk to people, there are bumps in the road with progress and this, it's really taken off now. So I appreciate you coming down just to kind of walk us through what we've talked about in months past and, uh, we'll keep forging this forward and, um, that's all I have today, Mr. President. Luke, thanks.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um...
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
I'm sorry, what is your name?
Uh, Luke Weatherly with Olson.
Thank you. Luke, um, just wanted to, uh, explore a little bit further on the TAP funding that you've mentioned. Um, that is T A P?
T A P. Transportation Alternatives Program. I believe it's a program that's put out by ND, NDOT, um, in coordination with some federal dollars. The NDOT is the administrator of that grant program, to my knowledge.
Okay. And how much was awarded, um, through this program?
I believe it was $13 million.
13 million?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
And that was just recently awarded within the last, I would say, month or two. So figuring out how do we go from award to implementation, um, who leads that portion of the project? I know there's conversations between UNMC and, and Public Works, um, going on to see who's the lead agent, if it is UNMC or if it's the city, but those conversations have already started to happen, so...
So those discussions are underway?
Yeah.
All right. And then you mentioned something about lab space. Um, perhaps this is not a good question for you, perhaps it's for the university, um, but I'm going to ask it, maybe you know about it anyway. Um, you mentioned that, um, there would be some lab space. Has the university talked about, um, what companies or what type of customers, um, might benefit for that space?
So I, I'm just a civil engineer. I'll preface with that, but have been involved in certain conversations. Unimed and Unitec are two companies that are currently, um, just north of Farnham Street, actually in Annex 14, this building here. It's anticipated that those, um, those functions or those companies would move over into the innovation hub, the catalyst. With respect to the, the core building, um, I've heard it termed as dry lab and wet lab space. So depending on what type of, uh, research or experiments they're doing in there, they may take a different level of, of, um, controls in that space, heating or, or ventilation and, uh, hoods and that sort of thing, but there will be availability for each one of those. Uh, as far as what type of companies would come in there, I, I couldn't speak to the, the specifics or, or names of, of any of those at this point.
Okay. So, uh, but this question, perhaps you might be able to answer. Um, let's assume that they are dealing with some biohazardous products, uh, in the lab. Um, I would imagine that you would have to incorporate that in your engineering or your plans in terms of, of, of creating that lab space. So has there been any, um, uh, built-in or anything to, um, protect or do what's necessary for that situation?
Again, civil engineer here, but I would assume yes. So, um, there are architects that are in design of that building as we speak. Um, there are protected corridors and, and blocked off areas that are only available to the people that are supposed to be renting that space.
Okay.
Um, at the, the high level of, of research and excellence that they do have there, I think they have a pretty good track record, um, of taking care of biohazards and waste. Um, so my assumption is yes, that would be built in to the design of the building. Uh, probably better answered by architect or, or UNMC, but...
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So, like my non-answer.
There's no further lights. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion in a second. To approve, roll call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 18, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to the PUD overlay district located northwest of 42nd and Morinda Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 18 is today. Proponents, please.
Uh, Justin Spooner, representing the developer, Green Lake Development, address 3511 South 105 Avenue.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Bagley.
Thanks, Mr. President.
Good afternoon.
Thank you.
One question for you. This is just to clarify, it's for additional handicap parking. Is that what this is for?
The hearing right now?
Yeah.
Uh, for asking approval for the rezoning, uh, the...
You're on the wrong one.
Oh, I'm on the wrong one. I'm going to defer to Doug Dreesen on that one.
I wasn't trying to throw you a curveball, honestly.
Douglas Dreesen, 10836 Old Mill Road. We're actually here for items 19 through 21. So we'll, we'll cede the floor to whoever's here for 18.
All right. Thank you.
Did I miss? Okay.
Are you here for our bottle club license?
Sorry. Go over you. That was confusing.
Go ahead.
Kyle Crouch, JEO Consulting Group, 11213 Davenport. Um, just here representing the, the client. Um, yes, the VA, um, the vet, I'm going to say it's a vet behavioral health, um, clinic moved locations from, I forget their last location, but...
72nd, I think.
72nd, something, yep. And then moved here, so it was an existing building, um, had been vacant for several years and, um, the VA required that they provide over and above handicap stalls. Um, the existing parking lot was, is very steep, you know, 10, 15% through the parking lot, so it didn't meet code, so we just had to provide those stalls for the VA to accept the building.
Okay. Right on the corner there, so I know, um, that's the question I had. That, that's it. Nice, easy question. I just wanted to verify that, so...
Yep, perfect.
And anybody else who want an answer, and I was going to hit you too, Justin, with it, but we'll get you on the next one. Thanks. Appreciate it. I'll make a motion to approve, Mr. President.
Motion in a second to approve. I'll just finish the public hearing. Any other proponents on number 18? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Items 19 through 21 can be considered together for property located at 3511 and 3515 Howard Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 19, an ordinance to rezone this property from R7 District to TOD 2 MUR District. Item 20, an ordinance to approve a PUR overlay district for this property. Item 21, an ordinance to rescind the ACI overlay district for this property.
Public hearing and vote on items 19, 20, and 21 are today. Proponents, please.
Now I believe is the correct time. Uh, Justin Spooner, representing Green Lake Development, the developer, 3511 South 105th Avenue.
Thank you. Mr. Dreesen?
Douglas Dreesen, 10836 Old Mill Road. Uh, here to answer any questions you may have regarding the engineering. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents to 19, 20, and 21.
Nice brown shoes, Wall Street. Uh, good afternoon, sir. Donnie Johnson, the Johnson Question Foundation, Northam Hall Concerned Citizen Foundation. Wanted to point out a couple of things that you folks may not be familiar with. When I lived on 168th and, uh, Pine Street, that awful tunnel out there, you know, that they had to replace the railroad, well, Dodge, those folks hit it just talked to you a few minutes ago. They're screwing you because I was noticing...
Thomas, this is about 3511 Howard Street.
Well, when you get screwed about that, uh, road there, or where they're doing all their developments on, what, 40th and Dodge?
We're not talking about that anymore. It's a different case.
Well, you're getting screwed because that tunnel was all going to have to be replaced. Mr. Keywood, he had us in engineering at junior high school.
All right. You're on the border now. Any other opponents to 19, 20, and 21? Seeing none, public hearing's closed. Mr. Bagley.
Motion approved.
Is motion a second to approve? Is motion a second to approve, roll call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thanks.
Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
Public hearings on agenda items 22 through 30 were held on September 19th. There's no further lights, is there a motion? Motion in a second, roll call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
There's been a request to remove item number 40 from the consent agenda, so it is removed. So first we'll take the public hearings on agenda items 31 through 39 and 41. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. This is 31 through 39 and 41. On those items.
Can we talk about the tunnel on Dot Street?
No, you cannot. Public hearings are closed. Is motion a second to approve, roll call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 40, a resolution to approve amendment number one to the professional services agreement for additional design phase services on the Missouri River WRRF Phase 1 Secondary Treatment Design Project.
Public hearing and vote on number 40 is today, proponents please.
Jim Tyler, City of Omaha Public Works Assistant Director. I have with me Ron Silva from HDR, Jake Hansen from the City of Omaha Public Works. If there are any questions that I can answer, I can refer to them if you guys have any more questions on that. I did previously brief the Public Works Committee on this item, and I believe a couple of weeks ago I passed out this wastewater facilities master plan to everyone. This master plan talks in general about everything going on at the treatment plants of which this project is one of the ma- the biggest project in the master plan. And I did provide a memo last week to the city council. Happy to answer any questions on the information I've provided, or if you want me to expand on anything that you already have. This is the largest public works project to date in our wastewater system, and it's very important for us to get this going.
Thank you. Other, you want to present still?
I, if you would like me to add any more information, I can go over some details on the, on the memo that I provided. I'll just in general, I'll...
Yep, please do.
Okay, so this is the Papillion Creek wastewater treatment plant, and this project consists of what you see here is the AGS basins as the primary part of what's gonna be built under this project. A lot of what you see here is, that is under the wastewater facility master plan, some of this is already going on. We have the biogas conditioning project that some of you are aware of, that's where they're doing the gas to the pipeline. We have our thermophilic digesters that are under construction right now. The AGS basins, they're sitting on top of our existing compost facility that's gonna have to move as part of this project. But this, this project itself, this is what's called our secondary treatment complex. It needs to be upgraded, the existing systems are old and antiquated and outdated, and they will not meet future regulations. Down here at the Papillion Creek wastewater treatment plant, that this amendment will cover for design, this is about $300 million in construction estimated cost for the project. We do intend to seek approval from the council to use the C Mar process for construction administration. And I believe that's, I'll leave it at that, if you have any additional questions, we can start from there.
Okay, thank you. Other proponents that want to speak? Seeing none, any opponents?
I was just gonna invite you to the game, Sarah, I gotta go to Nebraska. I got tickets, I was gonna give you, I want...
We don't need outbreaks during the meeting, but thank you. Any other opponents on number 40? Public hearing is closed, Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for taking us on a tour to demonstrate all of the different things that go on at this site. That was very helpful and valuable. For purposes of this meeting today, I'd like to ask how this will benefit communities as a whole.
How it will benefit communities as a whole? This treatment plant treats waste, well, both, there's actually two treatment plants under this work. The two treatment plants treat the waste from every resident from the City of Omaha in the metro area. So if, the benefit itself of providing clean wastewater from our residents to be disposed properly to the receiving streams, it's a major health issue. And this ensures the health of our residents and the environment around it.
Thank you.
I requested this come off consent agenda, just because when we have something that's, you know, this major, $17.6 million, I thought it was something we should discuss a little bit and have, make sure the public is aware of all that you are doing. These are sometimes things people don't think about that a city does, but this is vitally important to what a city does in terms of our waste management, and this is a major reinvestment in those facilities. So first let me commend you also on your announcement this week, as it applies in that regard to our combined sewer overflow program, reaching essentially the half milestone in that program, both financially and on our expanded timeline, and that we are managing that program well, and that we are on budget, because many cities aren't, while also meeting those clean water objectives. So I want to commend you for that and for the milestone you hit this week. And then also thank you for working on this project. The one component that will definitely need to change here in that site plan you just showed is that the composting site for our yard waste for Omaha, and also now Council Bluffs in Bellevue will need to be relocated, and there is a plan to do that, right?
So, we're actually, we're gonna be, we're gonna be having some internal meetings to further look into that plan and see what's best to do with that. We have some property near 60th and Harrison is one of the potential areas where we were looking to relocate, but there's been some things slowed down in that. So we're still considering that site. We are also gonna sit down and meet as well as making sure that, you know, if there is some additional room at the plant, that we may still consider trying to keep it there, but moving it closer to the road. So we have, we had a plan at 60th and Harrison, it's slowed down a little bit as the timeline of getting all that to work together. So we're kind of looking at some backup plans with that, but we're, we're gonna make sure that compost operations continue as this construction gets underway. So we're, actually, we're having a meeting here next week? Yeah, we're having a meeting here next week to kind of regroup on that, make sure we have all that taken care of.
Okay. So as part of this plan, the composting program definitely continues, in fact, at most, given our waste collection contracts. It may still be on this site, but that's still being determined?
That's, part of what we need to determine is if some things slowed down at the other sites we were looking at, what are our alternatives to keep something either temporary while we continue to look for another site, or permanent down where we're at? So those are the questions we're gonna have. But we do have available property down at the Papio plant, it's just things would have to move around a little bit. So we're really, we have a number of options. One of those options may be temporary, and, but we have a number of options to, all of which are intended to make sure we keep it going.
Okay. And then what's the overall timeframe for what we're talking about with this agenda item, the $17 million project?
So, one of the challenges we're gonna have is when we go to the C Mar process, one of the things we'll start to get from the contractor is a proposal on early, early action parts of the contract, which I originally think, when were we gonna start construction on this? Just say, just... We, we were originally looking for 2026 to start construction. Okay, and, and that was be under a normal design bid build, construction schedule. Once we employ the C Mar contractor onboard, one of the things that they're gonna do is they're gonna look for parts of the contract that they wanna start maybe earlier. So again, that's gonna be something that we, we'll just say that under normal design build, 2026, as we get into the actual construction process, there may be early action projects that start out of that. Something like site preparation, we may let that early.
Okay. So potential start in 2026, and then how long are we talking for?
Four years, approximately four years.
Still well within the 2037 deadline that we...
Yeah, and again, this one, again, this is, this is the treatment plant, it's not under the deadline of the CSO program, but it is under a permit schedule from the state of Nebraska, and with both plants, we were just working on a draft permit with the state right now, where we will have a construction schedule to do this project and a similar project in Missouri River, and we're just working with them right now on a timeline for that. But yes, we, we worked with them on the dates with that permit process to make sure that what we believe was reasonable base to meet on that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. One final question, has there been any discussion regarding buildout for small business opportunities to be a part of this construction opportunity?
So for, for all of our projects, we sit down with HRNR, and we go through the type of construction, and we set SEB goals, and so that, we do that with every one of our projects. So we're not far along into the construction. We're not far along in design yet to have set those SEB goals, but we do that with every one of our construction projects where we sit down with HRNR, and we, we go through the type of construction, and then their list of available contractors that meet that discussion, and then we work with contractors to put those goals into the contract. So we do that for every one of our projects.
Okay, so I understand that you are not, that this isn't done yet, it's not complete yet regarding your construction schedule. When that does become complete, and you do have the HRR results, or how direction you're gonna go in, could you please provide us, this city council, that information so that some of us that are being very engaged in their communities can perhaps alert workers that could skill up or potentially acquire some of these opportunities that they're able to do so?
Sure, that absolutely, that's something that we tried to make sure on the projects, and we were, we did some things successfully at our CSO program that we want to try to expand on and do a little bit more, where we'll actually have workshops with a, where we bring in the prime contractors and the smaller businesses and discuss the type of project it is, and just kind of get them to meet each other and make relationships, and we had some success with that with our CSO program, and those are things we want to expand upon.
Right, so what I'm asking is, please alert me when that time comes so that I'm engaged...
Absolutely.
...in those, when that is going on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now for the lights, is there a motion? Motion a second, roll call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 42, an ordinance to amend various sections of Chapter 55 of the Omaha Municipal Code regarding zoning, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number 42 is today, proponents please.
Good afternoon, Eric England, Omaha Planning Department. So yeah, I'm before here to ask for your approval of some potential modifications to the zoning code. So staff periodically takes a review at all our codes, specifically assigned subdivision codes, zoning codes. There are six main sections that are being modified with this amendment, and I can go into as much details as you want, but I'll just give a brief summary. They pertain to permitted districts for the assisted living use type, clarification to the townhouse residential definition, lot width requirement for duplex residential in R5 and R6 zoning, clarification to the single-family detached properties from certain tree planting provisions, correction of an error in the code for maximum wall sign area in the ag and DR zoning, as well as clarification to the zoning application fee schedule. So this was, went to Planning Board on August 2nd. Prior to that, whenever there's a change in zoning codes, state law requires notification to all the registered neighborhood associations. So we do send out information on this request to over 200 registered neighborhood associations. We heard back from about 10 of them with questions and clarifications. Most of them just thought it was pertaining to a specific project in their neighborhood, which is not true. So here to seek your approval of these changes. I would say they're very minor in nature, there's no increase in density, there's no increase in fees or anything like that. So here to answer any questions or further clarification.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 43, an ordinance to authorize payment to the University of Nebraska Medical Center for professional services to perform DNA testing for the Omaha Police Permit.
Public hearing on number 43 is today, proponents please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 44, an ordinance to approve an agreement with the Nebraska Medical Center and to authorize funding for this agreement from the City of Omaha's Fiscal Year 2022 Community-Based Violence Intervention and Prevention Initiative Grant.
Public hearing on number 44 is today, proponents please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 45, Bradco Company appeals the rejection of their bid from August 30th, 2023 for OPW 54635 roof replacement 42nd and D Street Building.
Thank you. Number 45 is not a public hearing, but it is an appeal of a denied bid. So we'll first hear from the, the company who is appealing the denial, and then we'll hear from the city. Go ahead.
Thank you. Dan, 10501 Chandler Circle with Bradco, just here to appeal the roof bid. Sorry, this is the first time I've ever kind of go through this. We were, how do you use this?
Yep, there you go.
Okay. So we were low bid for this project. We received a rejection letter stating that we issued the wrong general contractor's license, which was, this was the one that was issued, or I submitted through Ion Wave, and we got the letter saying that that one was rejected. And then we opposed due to, in the bid form stated that it was a B permit that was needed. And then that's when we started going through the process of appeal, and I email, or got emailed, sorry, Sylvia Hansen, and then she responded to me with this here that states that we were supposed to, should have put the Class E permit into Ion Wave, which I guess kind of confused us, why the bid form said Class B, which we're used to submitting Class E. So I guess my thing is, we can provide the Class E permit, which is needed to do this project.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
We'll hear from the city next, go ahead. Then we'll have, I'm sure we'll have some questions for both of you.
Thanks. Jeffrey Bloom, City of Omaha Law Department. So this case is a project that is a re-roofing project at 42nd and D Street, which is a commercial building, it has a flat roof. And it involves doing things that are necessary under the International Building Code. The City of Omaha, from my understanding and planning, can perhaps explain this a little bit better than I can, but they have five classes of contractors that can be licensed by the City of Omaha. A Class E license is under the International Residential Code, which essentially is for buildings that are one and two family units or townhouses less than three stories tall. They generally involve roofs that are asphalt roofs that are sloped, like you commonly see on a house or a townhome, or something like that. Whereas this particular building is a flat roof, it's a commercial building, and that would fall under the International Building Code. So that makes this a little bit different project than what we'd be talking about with like a apartment building or a townhome building or something like that. So with this, that is why when this project was put out for bid, they stated that they required a Class B license or above, because a Class B license or above are our two classes of licenses that fall under the International Building Code. Now, when Bradco submitted their bid, they didn't submit proof that they, of any license with the city specifically. They submitted a state contractor's license, but not a city contractor's license. And because of that, that was required submission under the bid. It was mentioned that they had to have a Class B license or above three times in the bid, and they did not submit that. So that's why their bid was initially rejected. Now, upon their appeal, they did submit evidence of a Class E license. Again, the Class E is a specialty license. It allows a contractor to do things like roofing, siding, replacement windows and doors, fences, decks, again, all under the International Residential Code. You know, the big difference between Class E and maybe a Class A, B, or C is that Class E does not require testing, where Class A and B, as well as C, does require testing to get that particular license. Also, there are differences in insurance requirements. Typically, a Class B requires $1 million in insurance, and that's generally what we require of general insurance when we have city contracts, whereas a Class E requires only $300,000 in insurance. So with this, whereas Bradco did receive an email from Public Works stating that roofers are required to carry a Class E license, while that is true, that isn't necessarily the full story, as far as... As far as if it was a roofer for a residential building, yes, they're required to carry a Class E license. But if it's a roofer for a commercial building, they would be required to carry a Class B license. So further on this, all of the bids have, in fact, been rejected by the department because nobody who did bid did possess the required Class B license. So the job is plenty of being rebid and the requirement will remain in place for the Class B license, just for the fact that that's the type of the building and that's what our city codes require. So if Bradco would be able to acquire a Class B license, it would certainly be eligible for the rebid. But that's the position that we've taken as far as on projects like these.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. This question is for Public Works. I just, we were just informed that we received, Bradco received a letter with an explanation as to why they were denied. And now we have the opinion of the law department that adds an additional statement to the denial. May I ask why the complete reason for the denial was not incorporated in the email?
Heather Tippie-Harris, Public Works. The reason for their rejection was included in the bid rejection letter that they did receive. There, I believe there was an email clarification from one of our secretaries. But that was, that was after they appealed. That was not grounds or part of the rejection process. It was just an email back and forth from one of our secretaries. So the official correspondence that I drafted and our director signed did state the reason for the rejection, which was that they did not carry an appropriate classification license for the type of project and according to the project specifications that were publicly bid.
So the letter that they showed on the screen, was that a true letter?
It was just an email back and forth between one of our secretaries. It was not their rejection. It was not falsified. It was correspondence between our secretary and Bradco.
So it did happen?
I never said it didn't. I, what I stated was that Bradco was provided with the correct reason for their rejection in their official rejection letter that was issued by our director.
So I'm just asking for credibility of the email because when we have electronics, we can alter. So I'm asking for clarification if the email that they received, is that, has it been altered? Is it, is it...
I have no reason to suspect that Bradco would have emailed or altered an email from the city. I have no reason to suspect that our secretary would have altered anything. I think that what happened was that there was an email correspondence between one of our secretaries and the company. That was not a part of the official rejection process.
So during our pre-council this morning, we talked about our processes and the fact that we have a whole group of applicants that failed to meet the requirement that was expected of them. And we talked a little bit about maybe reevaluating how we look at those things so that we are clearly defining our expectation. Can you re-gurgitate what we discussed during our city pre-council meeting, please?
Certainly. So during pre-council, we discussed the fact that there was confusion, obviously as Bradco demonstrated and in the bid responses, as to whether the state registration of being a general contractor duly registered to operate in the state of Nebraska was what was required. If a Class E, because it was a roofing project, was required, or a Class B, because this is a commercial building project, was required. So one of the things that we discussed internally after we rejected all bidders was if and how and when we were going to rebid the project. It is our intention to rebid the project. We do have a project manager working on a clarification that will go along with the rebid of the project, that this does in fact require a Class B commercial license and the technical specifications associated with it. We've also discussed possibly having a pre-bid meeting, which don't typically occur for these types of projects, but in this case may be warranted.
And can we conclude that in the future, when we have things like this, we will do differently in our processes?
Certainly, any working specification that would yield us the appropriate results would be repeated for similar type of projects.
So in my mind, it would appear that there was some mistakes made on our end. And so I'm trying to figure out for the public if we're going to do anything to improve upon our policies and procedures so that people are submitting applications or doing the right thing and that we can avoid a situation as today where we have someone that is objecting the denial.
Certainly, within our processes, we are always looking for improvements. Any improvements that we can implement, we will certainly carry that forward. We aren't intending to make an improvement here and then stop using that improvement.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Melton.
Thanks, but the bottom line is whether or not the city employee was incorrect, which I don't think the city employee was incorrect. Generally, a roofer just needs a Class E, but that's for international residential. For commercial, the code actually requires Class B.
Heather Tippie-Harris, Public Works. As I understand that, that's correct.
Yeah.
Generally speaking, a contractor that's doing a residential type work with asphalt shingles would require a Class E.
But for my thing, the council can't override city code. I mean, we'd have to change the code, but currently, we can't override what the code currently says.
That's my understanding.
Thank you.
Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Heather, the bid, I think the bid rejection letter that you or, I wanna make sure we're clear, that Bradco did get a bid rejection letter that was issued on September 6th had specifically stated what the deficiency was in the application.
Heather Tippie-Harris, Public Works, yes. The bid did not contain the appropriate classification license that was stated in the rejection letter.
Which was listed as, to be found in Article 7 of the bid form.
Correct.
And Article 7 of the bid form says that it needs a Class B or better.
Correct.
Okay, was a Class B or better submitted?
No.
Okay, I think that's pretty clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to be clear that the burden of the application, if we submit, if we, the City of Omaha, submit an application out to the public regardless to whether or not the code is very explicit regarding what is needed to do a flat roof, whether or not that is true or not. If we submit or send something out to the public and we're not being clear on our specifications, that we need to own that. We need to say that we've done something in error. We need to look at what we're doing so that we don't have situations like this. Just to sit up and say, our code doesn't allow for this. If we made a mistake, let's own that mistake because that's what good leadership is. We own what we do wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harding.
Well, I might not disagree with that statement. I'll go back to what I just said. We did not do anything wrong. The bid clearly stated that it needed a Class B or better. A Class B or better was not submitted with the application. Therefore, it was rejected. And a letter to that effect went to the company stating so. I'll move to deny the appeal.
Second.
Motion to deny in a second, Ms. Johnson.
The applicant, if you would please come back up. Do you have your original application?
Which one, I guess?
The application that you submitted.
You talking about the contractor registration?
Right, whatever you submitted to respond to this.
This one here?
No, the, you filled out a form of some sort.
I won't have that form because it all got submitted through Ion Wave.
Can we take a look at what was, how we communicated this request to the public? Can we take a look at that? Because that's what's at question here. We can dance all around with code charter. We can dance all around that. But what was, what the concern is, what, how did we communicate this to the public in terms of them meeting the expectation?
Are you talking the original bid? Okay, sorry.
Now, what do we have there? Okay, so leadership should have, we should've just stated. What should we have stated there in that documentation? So that that could've been clear to this gentleman here.
We've also, sorry, we've also bid projects in the past with, and doing the work with the Class E.
Uh-huh.
I'm not sure what project, which one was that? Sorry. The fleet. Yeah, so Omaha Public Works Fleet Maintenance Facility. We did the work and we submitted the Class E and was able to do the work off of that. So I guess that's kind of where, coming with the Class B and then getting notification with the Class E is where we're kind of at a loss, I guess.
And so what I'm asking is, how could we have stated that better for you so that you wouldn't be confused? Because not only were you confused, there were other applicants confused as well, because...
Yeah, everybody was.
Yeah, so how can we do that better?
Because I guess I talked to somebody that said, you know, 10 men who also bid this does like 50% of the work, and they submitted it incorrectly too because I think they're used to a different, you know, Class E license. So I don't know if this is something newer, maybe just got overlooked. And that's where I guess we're, that's where we were kind of at when we received this email and we have a Class E, but then we submitted the wrong thing. That's why we kind of wanted to get some questions answered and get everything squared away.
Okay.
Because we, you know, we would like to do the work. We like working with the city. So we just kind of wanted to see where we're at and what we could do to possibly still obtain that work.
Okay. The reason why I'm concerned about this is that, again, the way we communicate to the public is important, is very important. And if we are missing the mark in terms of what our objectives are, then we need to look at how that is being conveyed. So thank you for your time.
No problem, thank you.
I had one more question for you too.
Yes.
So did the explanation provided by the department and the legal department clarify the expectation for you today?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I appreciate it.
And then you know if this is denied today, the intention is to rebid the project and you'd be eligible to rebid?
Yes, yeah, I got that email this morning, so.
Would that be your intention?
Absolutely.
Good.
So, appreciate it.
Thank you. So there's a motion to deny in a second, and there's no further lights? Roll call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you.
Non-action items, items 46 through 69, do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda as well as the date. The item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Second, roll call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton. Melton? Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero, meeting is adjourned at 4:04.